I'd like to call the November 6th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education to order. In front of you, you have the minutes from our October 16th meeting. If I could have you take a look at those and when you're ready, if I could get a motion to approve those minutes. Hazel, second. Sherri. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. The next item is review and approval of the agenda. I would like to move our action items and consent agenda to the top of our agenda. So after comments from the public, we would have action items and consent agenda followed by reports and recognition. We have some members of the public here that are going to be presenting and parents would like to get those people home. So if I could get a motion to amend the agenda. Penny, second. Sherri. All those in favor? It's unanimous. And so if I could get a motion to approve the amended agenda. Sherri. Penny. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone wishing to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to the action items. And the item under action items is the Saks PTC Technology Donation. And we're going to be asking for a motion to approve a donation from the Saks Parent Teacher Council in the amount of $83,320 for 300 Chromebooks and eight carts for grades five and six. And I believe we have some members of the PTC that would like to say something about it or...
Sure, that'd be wonderful.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So I didn't know if I needed to make a formal statement about this. So I have a short one ready.
That's great.
So I'm Kate Van Duzen, co-president of Saks PTC along with Susan Galvin here. And we're here tonight on behalf of the PTC to present this donation of $83,320 for an allocation of Chromebooks to complete full carts in every LA and Social Studies classroom in grades five through eight as per the recommendation of Dr. Corenti, Mr. Salvastrelli, and Mr. Macedo. And as approved by Dr. Luzzi and the Board of Ed in the 2017 Board of Ed budget cycle. Our PTC board worked directly with Scott Barnett, Director of Digital Technology Services on the network side, and Matt Salvastrelli, Director of Digital Learning on the classroom and curricular side, to respond with these specific quantities and devices needed. Additionally, we went with Dr. Luzzi to confirm that this donation is in the best interest of our students. We are honored to stand here tonight to extend this one-time and significant gift. However, we would be remiss not to recognize past PTC boards who helped raise these significant funds to support projects such as the necessary auditorium overhaul, the Saks renovation, and the playground updates. The stars truly aligned as the normal shortfalls that behoove such large-scale projects didn't occur. This is truly a tremendous credit to the Saks Building Committee, particularly Jim Beal and Penny Ration, who worked tirelessly to ensure that the project sailed through without any major hiccups, which I think never happens. In closing, I just have to note that there is such incredible positivity within the Saks community. Students, teachers, and parents alike are really appreciative of the support and focus of the Board of Ed. Walking through the halls of Saks, you can see and feel the tangible benefits of your investments and commitments. Our students continue to thrive with your generous support, and we are thrilled to partner with you on this established technology goal. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't tell you how impressed and overwhelmed we are as a board with this sizable donation. So thank you to the parents and at Saks and to all your efforts because I know that these things don't happen without a very active and engaged PTC. So, thank you. So if I could get a motion to approve a donation from the Saks Parent Teacher Council in the amount of $83,320 for 300 Chromebooks and eight carts for grades five and six. Sherri, second. Hazel. Any comments or discussion? Sherri?
So I just want to take a moment to echo your comments and to really thank this generous contribution from the Saks PTC. And as you mentioned, Katie, I mean, you are working toward an established technology goal, which was put at risk because of our budget cuts last year. And so I also think it's a moment to really pause for people to realize that when the Board of Ed budget is cut, that these are real cuts occurring and that we are so very fortunate that the PTC is able to step in and really help us meet that goal so that every fifth and sixth grader can have those Chromebooks in their LA and Social Studies classroom. And also, I just want to comment that for those who aren't familiar, the very thorough nature of the Saks PTC grant process, it really is almost a year-round process whereby you are soliciting and receiving grant requests. They're very thoroughly vetted and reviewed and taken in front of the Saks PTC board as well as the Saks PTC membership for review and approval. So I know this comes to us after a lot of hard work. So again, I just want to thank you both but all of the Saks PTC parents for supporting this. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sherri. Any other question? Maria?
I think it is very, it is really generous and so thank you for that. I was sharing it with a Board of Ed member in Fairfield and they couldn't believe the amount of money, you know, that our parents could raise. But I have questions about the impact on the, this is for fifth and sixth grade only. Is that correct? Who has Chromebooks at this point in the eighth grade? Is this just, maybe you could give me some kind of information on that.
Yeah, why don't we?
All ratios.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If we remember the last budget cycle, the goal was to bring technology to the students instead of having teachers share a cart across the hallway or across the department. We were trying to achieve a ratio so that every teacher could have a guaranteed cart so their lesson planning and unit planning could depend on the technology being present, not on some compromise or negotiation with a colleague. So the budget cycle allowed us to roll out Chromebook carts for all the classrooms in Language Arts and Social Studies. We started with eighth grade, then went to seventh grade, then went to sixth grade, and then we started running out of the ability to put those carts in those classrooms. So Matt Salvastrelli and Dr. Corenti worked out what I would call kind of a hand-me-down solution on a temporary basis so that we started putting iPads and laptops and even old netbooks onto carts just so that we'd have technology available for the start of the year. And we were very hopeful and certainly very appreciative that the PTC could recognize the need because if the budget cycle was fully complete, we would have had all this for the beginning of the school year. So here we are at the beginning of marking period two. We're able to approve this donation and gift. That, as soon as we can get them in the hands of the teachers, that will allow every fifth grade Language Arts and Social Studies teacher to also have a cart and every sixth grade Language Arts and Social Studies. Right now, we're about 25 percent there of that group.
So if I had asked that, you know, we don't really have a district curriculum committee in the district, which I think we should, and I would like to know, well, how will this impact the curriculum for the fifth and sixth grade? I've had parents contact me. They're actually worried about the lack of handwriting. They're worried about not being able to access their students' work. They're worried about a lot of screen time. You know, how are we calculating the amount of screen time for the students? I'm all for computers. I work at St. Aloysius. We have Chromebooks. And I, the issue is the parents know there how they're being used. How will parents here know how often the students are on the computer, how to look at their assignments?
So presently, because of the sharing situation necessary, we have what could be called half carts, carts of 12 or 13 instead of carts of 24 and 25. So we are using the technology to the best of our ability, but instead of sharing a laptop with a peer and being frankly less efficient and less effective, every peer, every student now will have their own device while we do that lesson plan. So it's not really changing the impact. It's improving the access so that frankly, it'll be more time-smart for students to be able to access the lesson without having to do some work and then give it to their partner who can then go on to the Google Classroom, do some work, pass it back. Or, you know, those taking of turns is really ineffective. But it was a way that we at least shared the technology for the first marking period so that no one was deprived in the fifth and sixth grade. So really, it's a matter of access versus curriculum. I can tell you that we asked the Language Arts Coordinator to create some rationale for the PTC Executive Board as they entertained the grant request since it was such a high-dollar amount. So I can share some of her comments if you prefer that.
That'd be great. Yeah. That'd be great.
Sure.
So Sarah Bros is our grade five through eight Language Arts Curriculum Coordinator, and this is what she shared with the parents. Currently, our fifth and sixth grade are utilizing applications such as NearPod, Biblionazium, Google Docs, and Google Classroom in order to engage all learners in authentic work. Students are using the devices to share, type, interact with authentic audiences, including peer-to-peer or peer-to-teacher, submit assignments digitally, research, and engage in the writing process. Additionally, we're looking into additional applications to help students learn the skills and strategies to close read on a digital platform, which research proves to be a different set of skills than paper and pencil. Students are making strategic choices with the choice of product to showcase their learning, and iMovie and other video-related applications have been helpful to support this work. Matt Salvastrelli is looking into applications that currently exist on both the Chromebooks and the iPads to be sure that the technology can be used interchangeably with video camera and audio features. She goes on with a lot more, but I think, I think for the public audience, that captures the core activity that the students are doing.
I guess my question is, I see, I actually have my login, the login for my high school student, so I can see what he's doing online. How are the fifth and sixth grade parents, maybe all the parents if they're bringing it to my attention, how do they see what their children are doing? How do they support it? And second point is, some of them have rules in their household for nine and 10-year-olds as far as the use of technology? Is that going to be a problem? I mean, I know these aren't funding questions. These are curriculum questions and practice questions. So how do we address that? How do we hear what the parents have to say about this? If we accept this, what's the next step?
So as I said, our practices aren't going to change with or without this donation. They're currently in place. The most recent open house evening in early October, all our teachers went over with our parents how to access the homework assignments. All our Google Classroom assignments are visible to parents. There's a new feature, maybe it came into place, I think, after, you know, your individual experience with the middle school, but now Google Classroom allows parents to be part of the invited group. And so it says parent or guardian, and they have just as much access as the child. So at the middle level, where we want that transparency, they're included in all the Google Classroom assignments.
That's good. Sherri?
So I just want to add on to that. As a fifth grade parent myself, I actually want to say that I feel like there's very open communication. I was just recently at the open house. Every teacher has a website. It's the highlight of my week, at least once or twice a week, when I get an email pop-up with a Google share from my fifth grade son, who has written something, a research project in Language Arts or Social Studies, and he's sharing that with me. And I know that in my fifth grade open house, all of the teachers, you know, were really encouraging about coming in and having some one-on-one discussion if parents had any, you know, questions about how they can access the online, online work. I mean, I get it for parents. This is, you know, technology, it's a rapid pace of acceleration, but this is the world we live in, and we need these Chromebooks for our, for our students to keep up and compete. So again, thank you because I really think this is essential for the teachers to be able to fully integrate the technology into the classroom.
Well, it is the world we live in, and there, there's more and more research coming out about the impact of screens on students and that it interferes with social interaction. So I think I would like to see too, and I think others as well, are we keeping track of the amount of time students are in front of the screen? It's a cumulative effect by class. Then when they go home, you know, how much time in front of the screen? So I don't know how, if that's something you can survey parents to see if, you know, is this interfering at home? Do you feel it's too much screen time? You know, this is a new thing. It is a new territory. Something just came out of the Wall Street Journal about iPhones, how they're hacking our brains, and so we have to stay on top of it. And as fast as it's coming in, you know, the impact is happening. So I would just recommend somehow polling parents. I know this is only part of the computers. They're all in the middle school already, so maybe it's a good chance. If people are telling me they have, you know, there are issues, maybe it's time to poll them.
Well, and just, I also would just say, we certainly invite parents with questions or concerns or if they, you know, want to just share with us concerns they may be having at home that we can sort of help with. Our counselors can certainly help. You know, we do have folks who work in technology and who are educators, like Matt Salvastrelli, our technology integrators, others, you know, educators first. And so if parents are questioning or struggling or would like to know how to access the Google Classroom or other pieces like that, certainly I encourage them to, to contact the school, contact their teacher, others, administrator there, let them know. And certainly, we're always open to conversations and, you know, sometimes there are strategies that we might know that could be helpful for families at home and others. So I certainly, you know, if parents are struggling with this outside of the school and at home, would encourage them to reach out and we could certainly engage in a conversation with them and try to help them out in any way.
Dr. Luzzi, may I just add a couple of comments as well? I do want to just also reiterate that just because the devices are sitting in classrooms doesn't mean that the devices are open for an entire 45-minute block of time, nor doesn't mean that the devices are open every single day. I think they're used for when it's appropriate to be used. So you might be finding them in Social Studies. We have to remember our Social Studies teachers also teach digital citizenship and teach that digital literacy, so they need to have access to those computers. There's also the researching of the primary and secondary sources. It's giving us access to historians and able to do some collaborative work with those historians as well in that Social Studies realm. But I also want to reiterate that we still have lots of classroom books, lots of classroom libraries, that everything is a balance. So we're trying to teach children how to do a close read in a computer as well as doing a close read in a book. So it is two different sets of skills, and we need to be able to expose our kids to that and to be able to help teach them. Sometimes the computers are just used in centers. Sometimes it's for a whole class project. Sometimes it's just because they're doing an introduction. So there is that balance that's taking place. And certainly, I think one way that we can do that is through our presentations. We can certainly kind of walk people through, what does it look like a typical lesson? So how would they be utilizing those devices in a typical lesson in ELA? How might they be utilizing that in a typical lesson for Social Studies? Because I don't, I don't want people to get the impression that the computer is open the entire time and kids are just on that screen. There's a lot of other great things that are going on within that classroom as well as that, you know, integration of the technology.
Just one final. I know that some of the, the testing is an issue, and that's why we're using the Chromebooks. How often are they testing? Is it just NWEA and the Smarter Balance? And how, like, how many hours are they actually testing online?
The NWA is usually one block for reading and one block for math. Sometimes we might have children that need a little bit extended time of that block. And that's usually once a year, sometimes twice a year that they'll do the NWEA at the middle school. The Smarter Balanced Assessments, once again, it's probably about seven hours that they'll go through that Smarter Balance because they usually take two subtests in math, which are about two blocks of about 60 minutes, maybe less than the seven hours, probably about five hours. And then usually it takes two ELA blocks for them to do the Smarter Balanced Assessment. And that's usually given, you know, anywhere between March and May. And then they may be doing other kinds of assessments or reading on the computers just as part of giving children exposure. Like, we use Blue Ribbon in third and fourth grade where they actually take their district assessment on Blue Ribbon. So it's a platform that we use, but it's our assessment that's been loaded into this platform. It allows us to code. It allows us to put our questions in, and it gives the children that practice of what it means to take a test, a math test on the computer. We've been doing that for probably about five years now.
Any other questions? Penny?
Just to comment that, you know, since the, this incredibly generous donation, I'm in favor of it. I can't thank the PTC more to sort of equalize things across the fifth and sixth grade as well as with the seventh and eighth grade. And, you know, I think I might come at it a little bit differently than, maybe than you do, Maria. I am interested in screen time and in the effect of the use of computers, both on enhancing learning and, you know, how we can best use them. And to the extent that the research that Matt Salvastrelli, that you're doing, Dr. Corenti, you know, starts to elucidate that and you pass it on to us, I would love to know more about it because I don't think all screen time is equal. You know, and to the extent that we are able to teach our students to be able to concentrate in long blocks at times, whether they're using a computer or a textbook or whatever, just to be able to do that analytical thinking and questioning and writing using the appropriate tools, you know, is really what we're all about. So, but when you come across the research and when people start parsing it all out, please keep us informed.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I would agree. I think, one again, thank you. But I also think that, you know, as we, as computers become more integrated into the everyday education of our children and, and the everyday existence of them outside of the classroom, I am excited that, you know, that they're getting more exposure and lesson planning and strategies and education about the effective use of those tools. Because, you know, we all have different levels of knowledge that we can pass on to our children and, you know, having people in the district that can help our kids effectively navigate those tools safely and effectively, I think, is, is to our benefit and to our children's long-term benefit. So, enough said. So, Sherri?
I just want to say one last thing, which is almost repeating what Dr. Luzzi said, and to the extent that you, the PTC presidents can help with this. To the extent that parents have questions, I would encourage them to ask their teachers, their counselors. I wouldn't necessarily encourage them to be posting these questions on Facebook. I don't think it's the best venue for getting the information that you, that you need for your own child's education. So I just think we need to continue to pass that along. I think the teachers, the administrators, the counselors, our staff, we're there to support the parents and give them the information they need. So let's just open that dialogue.
So we have a, I did take a motion, right? I got a, yes. I got a first and a second. Yes. So all those in favor of the donation that's on, the motion that's on the floor? All those in favor? Does anyone want me to reread it or can we just vote? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much. And please feel free to leave. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And if I could get a motion to approve the consent agenda. Hazel, second. Sherri. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to reports and recognition, we have our enrollment and staffing update with Mr. Pass.
Thank you, Gary.
As Gary gathers his things, just to let you know, we do have additional copies of the enrollment report if anybody needs them. I'm looking around. I see everybody has them, so we're in good shape. Great.
Well, good evening. So thank you for the opportunity to present information about our district staffing and enrollment tonight. We're going to talk about this year, where our numbers are, and look at projections for, for next year. In order to do that meaningfully, we've compiled a considerable amount of data from a variety of sources into four reports. And it should be noted that all of these reports are posted on our website this afternoon under Board of Education Presentations. So let me talk a little bit about those, those four reports. Okay. So the first is this report, the Memorandum on Enrollment Projections. This analyzes information and reports provided by our demographer based on past, present, and projected enrollment in the New Canaan Public Schools. Also included are the demographer's charts and graphs showing New Canaan's historical enrollment and our projected enrollment. The next report in red, the red cover, is the Staff Utilization and Enrollment Report. And this is a comprehensive look at our certified staffing for 17, 18, all based on what the, what the staffing looked like on October 1st. This report includes summary enrollment data, staffing data with FTEs at all levels, including section, class size for each grade, faculty leadership positions, administration, and summary totals. It has many uses as a source of information and serves as a standard reference for us throughout the year. Also, there is a separate staff utilization report in, in the Clemson orange color, just for the record. And this, this report has all of the data regarding our non-certified staff members at each school and in each department. We also have part of a supplemental analysis report. This provides perspectives on the data in the Staff Utilization and Enrollment Report. It looks at the full-time equivalent comparison of this year with last year at each level and by department, and a look at which classes may be under district guidelines, which classes might be over, and a look at enrollment in special education programs. So in order to pull all of this data together, I would like to thank my entire human resources staff, Lisa Abrams and Lynn Reese, and all of the principals are here. The administration at the school level and certainly in special education verified all the information contained in these reports. This review could never have happened without their support. They are all here today to answer any questions that you may have. So, let's take a look at how we'll, take a look at this data. And because the data is presented from several different perspectives, including the different levels in our system, the specific grades, core and encore subjects, classes and sections, it's rather voluminous. So really try to focus on a couple of questions, some guiding questions around this presentation. Hopefully, by focusing on these questions, you can have a clear snapshot of where we were statistically as of October 1st, 2017. And you also may have a sense of where we might be headed in the future. As with any presentation, the data provided in these reports is quite detailed, and our report today provides only an overview of the data. So tonight, we're going to talk about enrollment, student enrollment in the system overall at each level, elementary, middle school, high school. We'll look at special education. We'll look at class size. And then we'll finish with what are the projections for next year? We'll also look at certified staffing numbers. How many teachers and administrators at each of the levels, elementary and secondary, and in special education? So a lot of ground to cover in a short time. So we start with a snapshot of the entire district. Over the last six years, we have increased 42 students over the last six years, interestingly. At 4,142, the October 1st enrollment K-12, it's a decrease of 28 students from last year. enrollment K-12, it's a decrease of 28 students from last year. Of this decrease, the majority came at the elementary level. We have 23 students less than the demographer's projection, which, as we all know, is still quite amazing in terms of its accuracy.
Hey, Gary?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt. You said 4,142.
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
Forty-one hundred and eighty-two. Okay. 4,182 is our current, is our current enrollment on October 1st, K-12. Not included in these numbers are pre-K, which saw an increase from 36 students to 41. And on our next slide, we'll talk about the total K-12 enrollment. We take the 4,182. We have 14 out-of-district placements, and we have 41 students in pre-K, giving us a school district total enrollment of 4,237 students. Compared to last year, just, it's actually 25 students less than last year's overall total. These numbers do not include students that attend our launch program, and there are four students that attend, that attend launch. So, now, let's take a look at each level in terms of enrollment. This year, our kindergarten came in at 276 students, three actually over-projection. And I know over the summer and the springtime, we were, we were kind of worried about getting to our numbers. But turned out, three over-projection in kindergarten, up by three from the previous year of 273 Overall, our total K-4 enrollment is 1,532 students. It is 49 students less than last year and 25 students under-projection. Here's a little further breakdown by school at the Here, this shows the East School enrollment, 10 less than last year. South School, two less than 2016, 17. West School, 37 students less than last year. We also put in the average class size. You see at each of the schools, our average class size is in the 18 range. The other piece that I listed here is that West also houses and oversees the 41 pre-K Here's the other piece that we always want to take a look at for elementary numbers, and that is monitoring enrollment at this level. We now have 28 classroom sections at East School, 29 classrooms at South, and West with 27 sections, including the pre-K. So, that's something that we always want to monitor in terms of our enrollment and our, and our projections. Saks Middle School, October 1st had 1,331 students, 30 less than last year, but eight under-projection. So, it decreased slightly. NASDAQ, who is our demographer, projects enrollment to increase slightly next year, up three students. Also, the demographer projects that the enrollment at Saks to decrease slightly to 1,334 in the 1819 school year and 1,313 in the 1920 year. New Canaan High School, October 1st enrollment was 1,319 students. If you remember that, New Canaan High School's enrollment peaked at 1,348 students in the 1011 school year. This year, it's at 1,319 and is projected to decrease next year, according to NASDAQ, by seven students to 1,312. Then, New Canaan High School will, according to our demographer, the enrollment will then begin to climb to an anticipated 1,4346 students in the 22, 23 school year, five near-years from now, a 27-student increase. The special education student population has increased slightly this year due to the number of move-ins from last year to today. Our prevalence rate this year is 10.8% compared to 9.8% last year. But our enrollment did increase by over 40 students in special Here's enrollment. Now, looking at class size guidelines. In looking at enrollment and class size guidelines, this chart shows that for this year, for this year, the percent of classes overall in the district that are at or below the board guidelines, it looks like, as shown on page one of the Staff Utilization Report, class size guidelines for K through three classes are 16 to 20. Shown here is that at the elementary level, the percent of classes at or below the guidelines maintained at 100% of our sections. So, if you look across the board, elementary class sections, every single class was at or below the board guidelines. The guidelines for grade four through eight are 20 to 24 students. Saks typically has a small percentage of classes over the guidelines, maybe 2%. And the chart here shows that Saks is at 98% of students in classes at or below the guidelines. The high school, that percentage there is 92% of the classes are within class size guidelines. So, overall, the percentage of classes at or below the guidelines has remained well above 90% on average and is relatively consistent over the past five years. Now, we can move on to taking a look at certified staffing. So, the increase from last year, year over year, three FTE positions. So, the way that I would have you take a look at these certified staff positions is by each school. So, what we did was we took a look at enrollment. We compared it with our full-time equivalent FTE positions. And these numbers up here are showing the decreases or increases by school based on the full-time At Saks Middle School, current FTE is 116.10. Last year, 115.3, an increase of eight tenths of a position. And at the high school, we increased over last year the equivalent of 1.2 positions at the secondary, at New Canaan High School. And for FTEs in special education, our increase was one and a half positions in special ed. And really, that was tied to some enrollment. So, kind of looking back, going back to enrollment, take a look at the demographer's projections for our school district for next year. The demographer is projecting that as a district as a whole, we will increase by two students, from 4,182 to 4,184. Examined by level, the demographer projects an increase of six students at the elementary Saks Middle School, demographer is projecting a very slight increase of three students for next year. And at the high school, a decrease of seven students. So, what you can see from what our demographer is projecting, a period of amazingly stable enrollment, we're talking about the difference between year over year, under 10 students at each, each location. So, again, stable enrollment period for next year, we, even as you look out for a longer period and you have the projections for future years, we always know that these enrollment projections are most accurate the closer to the year we are. So, for next year, we know we can move forward with our budgeting process and look at, and look at a fairly stable enrollment for the coming year. So, again, I'd like to thank all of our staff, principals, their staff members for helping verify the information contained in these reports. These, their support has been just amazing in terms of pulling all of this data together. And tonight, we're here to answer any questions that you may have about enrollment or staffing. So, I thank you.
Thank you, Gary. I know this is a lot of work, and thank you to everyone for their efforts in accumulating all this data for us. I'd like to open it up to questions from the board. Anyone have any question? Penny?
Right. So, Gary, I'm just trying to, the one slide shows an increase of three FTEs from 2016 to 2017, 18. But if we look at the elementary, that is net, the math just wasn't working for me. I was wondering what I was missing.
What page are you on?
So, the elementary is going down overall, 1.5. Saks is going up two. Maybe I missed the high school.
Penny, can you tell everybody what pages you're on so he can look to this?
Pages 14, 15, and 16.
Great. Thank you.
And 13. And special ed is going up, maybe I just did it wrong. Yes, special ed's going up 1.5. The high school and Saks are going up two, so that's up 3.5. And then, elementary is down 1.5. So, what, so what did I do wrong?
You know, the challenge has always been, you know, if you just look at, you know, the high school numbers, the numbers of ins and outs of what increased, what decreased is also, you know, a big challenge.
Oh, you know what? You don't have the faculty leadership and the central faculty leadership change.
Oh, there's one. That's
That's why.
Another extra one.
Yeah, that's, it's not in this presentation, but it's, that's why, the three.
Right. So, what's the last one?
It's the 1.0 faculty leadership.
So, you have the EL Coordinator position?
I was wondering, I was actually thinking about the ELA Coordinator.
That's not a building position. So, the 3.0 summary is the whole district
Okay.
piece. But when you look at the five sort of cost centers, that's specific to each of those buildings. Right. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. No, I was actually thinking about that. You know what? Just so there's no confusion when we post, maybe add that to the final slide where special education adds something else.
You mean with the 1.5 in special?
Add the 1.0 for ELA Coordinator if that's certified.
The ELL.
ELL, just ELL so that it all
Ties up.
Ties up. Because she is not building-specific.
Right. Thank you.
That'd be great. And I have to say, I was, you know, I always look, I always look at the kindergarten number because that's the one where you have to put in the multiplier. And so, it's the riskiest, in a sense, the most variable. And the fact that that one was so close. Do you, do you know offhand what the multiplier was that NASDAQ used to predict the enrollment for this year?
I don't know what the multiplier was. Brian might.
Is it around 1.2?
David Jessen, it's slightly above 1.2, I believe, is where they've come to, between 1.2 and 1.4. They had gone up as high as 1.6.
Right.
But now, they've brought that back down for these projections that we have. And the multiplier that Penny's talking about is the birth to enrollment. So, it's a five-year number. So, you look at births five years ago, and then you look at your kindergarten enrollment. And over time, you develop a ratio for the number of births versus the number of enrollments five years later. So, that's, so they have brought that number down from where they were a couple of years ago. And it's all statistically driven based upon history, the history that they look at. So, we haven't, I haven't had the time to reverse engineer this one yet, but I will.
Well done by NASDAQ. And it's Dr. Kennedy still?
Yes, it is Dr. Kennedy.
Yeah, Penny, I think your point is so well-made that I want to just make it again. To be within three students on the kindergarten enrollment projections is pretty, pretty impressive work. And where we do, I also look very closely at that, too, because that kind of forecasts what's to come for the next 12 years. You know, so we look at kindergarten at that number, and then you can, you sort of can play that out a little bit. So, that's an important number. It's very hard to predict, especially given the forces that are happening with the preschool and the five-year-old classes and decisions around enrollment or not. So, it can be very difficult. And this year, they're within three students, pretty outstanding.
Any other questions? Sherri?
So, overall, it's really exciting to see all the high percents on meeting the class guidelines.
Yes.
It's wonderful, wonderful. So, just with the high school at 92%, and I know the data's in here, but I haven't had the chance to go through. So, I'm just curious if the classes at the high school that are over class guidelines, do those tend to be the core classes or electives or?
Can you come to the
Want to use the microphone?
Microphone.
Great.
Thanks.
Tend to be electives that we want to run. You'll see maybe an AP math class. We'll hop over the course-size guidelines. But that generally is the higher number. There are some core classes in there, but if you were looking at it overall, you'd see probably more electives that hit that number.
You're calling AP math and elective?
It is elective, yeah.
Oh, right. Okay.
I don't consider it a core class.
So, rather than deny an enrollment request,
Correct. That's exactly right.
You would bump it over the guideline.
Yeah. We'd offer, the teachers generally want to offer all kids that have the opportunity to take the course. So, instead of cutting it off, we wouldn't have another section. They'll let that bump above.
How, what's the largest size?
Right now, I think it was 26. It was 27, maybe. That was the highest number. We've been up to 32 last year.
It also tends to be the PE classes.
It can be, absolutely.
Right. I think the vast majority of them are the PE classes that we do tend to over-enroll a bit because the, because of that, we don't want that to become a hard conflict in a student's schedule.
Right.
So, if they're choosing between a PE class or one of their other courses, you know, we'll put them into the PE class and allow that to go over the, over the guidelines so that they can have the core class that they would otherwise be shut out of if we let the guidelines drive that decision. So, if you look on the supplementary analysis on page four, yeah, you can see that of those classes, about half of them, a little more than half of them are those PE classes.
Yeah, 19 are over guidelines in PE, and five of them are over by one, eight of them are over by two, and six of them are over by more than two. Yeah.
Hazel?
I just was going to say about the PE also, that I think that PE teachers have more flexibility in their curriculum to be able to perhaps switch a game or something that's happening and have ways for different people to work in and out if it's volleyball, whatever they're playing or working on particular things. I think they have more. I was very pleased to see the class sizes and see how much people have worked on that because that's so important, I think, for everything that's going on. And just appreciate it.
Other questions?
And just on that, Hazel, the, I know I talked about it all summer long, but those weekly meetings by the elementary principals with Gary and Jill and working, looking at the numbers and constantly monitoring two students in, one student out, what's happening, that's where we see the results of that hard work. When we see the classes coming in, you know, at or under the guidelines means that, you know, we're maintaining the quality of the classroom experience for all of our kids. Thank you.
I wanted to ask one other question. I would, I would have thought that some of the projects that are being built in town would have brought some more people in, but it doesn't seem to have changed. some more people in, but it doesn't seem to have changed it very much with the way they're predicting.
In terms of enrollment?
Yes, the enrollment and things like, it just, it was interesting to me.
Yeah.
And I guess they're thinking it'll be mainly adults coming in and not so many children.
Yeah, it didn't really jump out as an area where our enrollment picked up a number of children, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
You know, Gary, I just had one, because as I look at, it looks like we're definitely having kind of a shifting of where our enrollment, as I look out, I know you said the high school next year is predicted to be down seven, but then in nineteen twenty, you pop up to almost thirty-one more kids at the high school, and then, and another, the next year, thirty more after that. And so, you know, while we have a one-year sort of hiatus.
Right.
We're starting to see a big shift in where our students are going to be. And so, I just wanted to sort of get, I guess, the administration's philosophy in preparing for that kind of major shift in where the enrollment is going to be in the next, I mean, if they play out in the next two years. You know, one, you know, do we have facilities, you know, that accommodate those numbers? And two, you know, sort of staffing, you know, where, how can we shift, how able are we to shift staffing?
Would you like me to take a stab at it, Gary?
Oh, that'd be lovely.
All in to the first part. No, just kidding. The facility is well-sized for the size of the student population. As you know, it was renovated about ten years ago, and the space, it was renovated for, I believe, to accommodate fifteen hundred students. And so, I believe, you know, we're using all of the space that we have quite well here now, but we can continue to flex upward. You know, so the classes are, would become shared a little bit more often, and things like that. We're using all of the space, but we also, in the design, have centralized offices for the core classes, so English, science, not science, but English, math, social studies, world languages. They have a central office space for teachers, which means we can share the classrooms more often. So, we would be able to flex up that way with the space. As far as the staffing goes, you know, we try to share where we can, but the scheduling difficulties that we have in that we run very different schedules at our middle school and our high school, and the certification typically can go seven through twelve, but the scheduling, and also, in truth, we've invested in our middle school model of teaming over the last couple of years, which can flex up or down with the number of students that are there. And, you know, sharing the staff, the core staff that way would mean sort of take a step back from that teaming model at the middle school, which, which I wouldn't recommend. So, we look at the staff that we have, we look at the course offerings that we have for students. There, as this goes up, and you're right, Deanna, it looks to me in a couple of years, it looks, and I think Gary, you may have mentioned this, may, according to these projections in 2021, looks like it hits a peak of about thirteen seventy-two. So, it's, you know, about sixty or so students more than where we are. Now, those will typically be dispersed across the grades, so it's not just hiring another teacher to teach, you know, a course, as in, as we do with certainly elementary, sort of, it's a one-to-one piece, which is why this year, when we looked at the budget, we asked for one point two because it was spread out across the disciplines. And we wanted that, needed that flexibility to be able to meet the student enrollment patterns in their course selections. So, that worked out well this year, and we'll probably continue to look at how we need, how we can best develop a schedule to meet all of our students' needs. So, there will be, likely be some staffing needs, you know, as we go. And if there are some decreases in other spots, then we look at, you know, decreasing the number of sections that we offer at the other levels, so whether it's the elementary, you know, as we look at the student enrollment. But again, having three elementary schools, if you see a decrease of, say, twenty students in the elementary, you might say, good, there's a teacher, but that could be dispersed across one school and four grades, or it could be dispersed across all three, and so, it doesn't really work out to be one-to-one. But periodically, we'll hit tipping points and be able to reduce sections, and when we can, we certainly do to stay within the guidelines. So, it's, I think we keep an eye on it, and we continue to offer different and interesting courses for students, and we look at the enrollment. And what we've been able to do a little bit is to have some of our teachers pick up additional teaching responsibilities, which has been helpful. So, instead of bringing a new staff member on board, if we have a teacher who can pick up an additional section of an elective course or even a core course sometimes, we'll encourage them to do that, too.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, there are no more questions? Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
It's great. It was very helpful. All right. So, moving on, we have comments from the public. I'm guessing there's no one wants to address the board at this point, so we'll move on to announcements and future business. Dr. Lettsie?
Sure. So, our next Board of Education meeting is November twentieth, and we will have a swearing-in of our Board of Education members who are elected tomorrow as a result of the vote. That's a quick reminder to everybody listening and interested to be sure to vote tomorrow. The, we'll also have a report from Joanne Rocco. She's been working to put together a report on safety and security, and we'll be talking a little bit about our safety within the district. We'll also be talking a little bit about cybersecurity. I know that's been an area of interest for people. So, Scott Barnett's been working with our staff a bit to talk about best practices in cybersecurity and for the network, for individual users, and so, he'll share some of that with the board as well. Joanne, in her presentation, will have our SROs with her. I think maybe Steve Bedard from the middle school will be here as well, and so, we'll be able to talk to them and learn from them about what we're doing in the district around safety and security. And of course, we'll have our statement of accounts, as it will be the second meeting of the month. And I do, just while I have the chance, want to say thank you again to the PTC and PFA for bringing Dr. Brooks into the district on Thursday night. It was a wonderful opening of the Saks auditorium for the public, and we began the meeting by asking everyone, or this session workshop, we're asking everyone to take a very deep breath and exhale and to enjoy the new auditorium smell. And it was really a wonderful presentation in a great new space that we had, and I want to thank the PTCs and PFA's for making that possible for us. We estimate somewhere between five and six hundred people were there, you know, when we look at the pictures and look at the seating in the auditorium. So, really, an outstanding turnout. And thanks to the generosity, again, we're able to offer the same workshop or the same speaker with a different sort of approach for the faculty and staff at four o'clock after school, and they did a wonderful job. He did a wonderful job with them as well. And the auditorium was, again, more than half-filled. So, it was a wonderful day, and I want to thank them for that. Of course, I want to remind everyone that Aladdin Junior is beginning at the middle school as well, so another opportunity to see in the, a great show with our students in the auditorium, and that's coming up this week. And again, to vote tomorrow. And tomorrow, schools are closed, as I'm sure you know, because of the voting, but teachers will be here for professional learning, and we'll be working throughout the district together with our colleagues in order to continue to be the very best that we can be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, could I get a motion? Oh, Penny, do you have some questions?
I just wanted to say that with respect to the Saks Building Committee, we're going to officially invite the public to tour Saks. It's going to be December fifth in the afternoon. So, we've had these openings for school events, but we thought that the community had really supported this project, and we wanted to be able to show the results of it to the community. So, December fifth in the afternoon, I think it's four PM, they'll check that time because we have to finalize it. Please put that on your calendar. If you're interested, we'll have a short presentation in the auditorium and then tours of the new facilities, and by that time, the new band and choral rooms would be, will be finished. And looking at the enrollment and the thorough report that was done, I can see that we definitely need those larger rooms for the students and the class sizes that we're going to be having in music. So, just wanted to add that.
Great. Thank you, Penny. All right. So, if I could get a motion to adjourn. Maria, second. Sheri, all those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.